So, folks will call the regular meeting of council for February 22 to order, 7:00 PM. Looking for approval of our agenda? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation, we do have a few folks in the audience if you'd like to come and speak to council. Now is your time. Mr. Coburn, don't jump up so fast.
Just some clarifications on some findings of the public hearing for bylaw 1598 and the one at Winthrop Road. I was at the, I was at the, both the committee meeting and the public hearing and there's some, there were some things mentioned there that aren't covered in the minutes. I'm particularly interested in the fact that the city gets secured the 17-meter-wide right-of-way through this property as the applicant's agent confirmed at the committee meeting that he would. And that's the main part of the concern and also when I read the findings of the public hearing, I did ask some questions relating to, excuse me, sewer-ing, whether the septic fields for the two lots would be located on the future road right-of-way. And the applicant's agent said that one would be. And I just find that, I don't think that's really right and I'm, I'm asking in this letter to take a look at a restrictive covenant blocking anything from being built or constructed on that piece which will be future right-of-way. So the minutes don't really reflect that, they kind of, we had a dialogue going back and forth and it made it look like I was in agreement with that. But if the sewers do come up there and I'm interested in pursuing sewers for the area and somebody wanted to build that road through there, then the first thing the app, this property is going to say, "Well, you better hook me onto the sewer because you're digging up my septic field." And so I'm asking you to take a look at a restrictive covenant in that regard, to say that nothing be built on that 17-meter strip. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? For any reason? Final time? Anyone wanting to speak to council? Okay, we'll move on then, thanks. Mayor's message. Some of us are in pink representing the anti-bullying day that actually happens on February 24th, but we don't meet on the 24th, so we are celebrating that or making it aware by various shades of pink, including this lime-green one. But nonetheless, it is an important recognition and our staff has undertaken to do as much pink as they can come the 24th, so I'm sure we'll have pictures posted on our website come the 24th. councillor Martin, you have a couple of things coming?
Yeah, just regarding library information, just a note to public and to council that the mobile bus is coming to Wanda Fuka on Friday, somewhere between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM. I'll find out exactly what time it's going to be arriving. There will be a media event there. There'll also be a media event on February 25th at our place for the mobile bus and all councils are invited to attend that. And also on the Friday, sorry, the Friday will, after it leaves Wanda Fuka, it is going to Royal Bay Secondary School for another media opportunity, so the high school kids will be coming out to do that. So I invite council, if they can, come to both and I'll give you the specific times. Also, I'll leave this with staff, but the Greater Victoria Library, we just, on the board, we just finished the strategic plan for 2016 to 2020, so it's here for everybody. So I don't know what we'll do with it. I'll give it to staff and they can file it. That's all.
Great. Any other, councillor Dave?
Just wanted to remind all of council and the public if they're wanting to attend the Teach-Mista Theatre on this Thursday, is a public presentation of Taking Care of Ourselves, Taking Care of Others, so it's a great follow-on to the anti-bullying activities for Pink Shirt Day on Wednesday. Taking Care of Ourselves and Taking Care of Others teaches kids about online safety, about predatory behaviors, and it's generally fun and informative presentation by youth for youth, so.
Anyone else? Seeing none, then we'll move forward. Before we get into the adoption of the three sets of minutes, a member of our public has made an inquiry on the minutes for bylaw number 1598. Do we hold that now or do we need to reflect some changes to it or what's the process?
Madam Mayor, I would suggest that it's at council's discretion, the members of council who were in attendance at that meeting can verify whether they feel that the minutes from the public hearing are accurately representing the public hearing or not. And if you choose that they, that those minutes don't represent that, then you can opt to correct them in this, at this point in time if you like.
So what I'm going to do then, council, is we'll cover off on the first two, 4.1.1 and 4.1.2 for adoption, and then I will ask your preference on the bylaw number 1598 minutes. So for 4.1 and 4.2, looking for adoption?
Move adoption, your worship.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. For 4.13, your preference? councillor Martin?
Thank you. I think most of us were in attendance to that, but I don't think, and I do remember the specific conversation of Rex and the agent going back and forth, and I don't believe the minutes actually reflect what Mr. Coburn has brought up this evening. So I would recommend that we go back and just have them relook at the video and perhaps just fine-tune it and then maybe bring it back to the next meeting. So I don't know how I would make that motion. Is that just a defer? Yeah, so I'll just make a motion to defer.
Any further comments, councillor Dave?
Just that in the minutes, it does note specifically the owner of the neighboring property and speaks to the new house being serviced by septic field and concern with regard to that encroaching into future road dedication, so I'm not sure where the minutes are not correct.
May I? I think, I think specifically what, and again, what we heard this evening was about that there was a specific discussion regarding the septic field being placed on the 17-meter and, and the issues around that and the discussion that was going back and forth regarding that.
So, just if I may read it out for you, just because it does say it, it's in the last paragraph before the mayor calls for public comments for the first time, and it says, third line up from the bottom says CRD Water, so it will be served by CRD Water and will have its own septic tank, that the new septic tank system will encroach onto the land marked for future road dedication, that there is no proposal for city sewer, that the owner will be required to supply whatever frontage improvements the city requests for Winthrop Road. So I think that it speaks to the issue, I'm just not sure what we need to change.
Is there anything specific?
No, I hold to what I think that it should go back to staff and have them just review it once upon a time, so I'm just saying that I still think that's a good idea.
Okay, so we're at a motion to defer back to staff so that they can review on that and review the information. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Moving on then to item 4.2, receipt of 4.2.1, public hearing, bylaw number 1606, 4.2.2, report of public hearing, bylaw number 1598. I think we better hold that one out from there as well, so we'll do 4.4, 4.2.1, 3, 4, and 5 for receipt.
Move receipt, your worship.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. And 4.2.2, motion to refer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Presentations, do we have Mr. Rob Bernhardt in the house on Passive Houses?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm the president of the Canadian Passive House Institute West and I'm also active in the local real estate market, designing, building, and selling homes and buildings meeting the International Passive House Standard of Energy Efficiency. CAMFE West is a membership-based, not-for-profit organization delivering education, information, and events intended to advance building energy efficiency. We do so certainly all across Western Canada and some events in Central Canada as well. We work closely with government in advancing their energy efficiency policies and as well, I am, in my spare time, am a local small developer and have developed projects for the local market and do some commercial construction in the area as well. So I'd like to, this evening, just take a few minutes to share information on the qualities of passive house buildings. There is no time in the 10 minutes allotted to go into the details at all, but these buildings are currently being offered by leading design and construction firms. They offer governments the opportunity and really about the only well-established opportunity to meet greenhouse gas emissions targets by creating more efficient buildings and they are becoming more and more widely recognized as the mechanism for improving the quality of the building stock and of course, without improving our building stock and making sure that component of the emissions are addressed effectively, we're not going to achieve our emissions reductions targets. And of course, like any innovation or transformation, they always start with a few. We happen to be the few in this area, but we're now seeing large design and construction firms engage in it. There's some larger projects being designed. This is a rental 100 project right there in Vancouver, so it's a rental building going up, six-story wood frame, commercial on the bottom, I think it's 80 or so units up above. And that type of development is becoming increasingly common. There's a number at that scale in Vancouver. Now, just as we go through, show a few images of local projects. It is a building standard that was developed by building scientists in Europe and is much more established in Europe, but is becoming rapidly more established here. So first of all, what is a passive house? That's always the first question we get asked. And the first thing that I will typically say, it's a tool, it's not a brand. It's a tool that enables designers to design a low-energy building, a building that operates on very little energy while also offering superior comfort and indoor air quality to the people that are in the building. It is reliable, there are some 50,000 or more of them built around the world of all types, from hospitals to high-rises to single-family homes, schools, all sorts of things. So it's been done again and again. It is based on a very detailed building energy model. It's all about building physics. It is not the solar passive you may have heard of from the 1970s. This is a detailed sort of building physics approach to designing a building and it's not prescriptive. It doesn't say, excuse me, how a building must be built or what materials are to be used. It simply says, "Here is your energy budget, figure it out," and provides a tool that enables designers to do that. So it's built according to the local construction practices and also having regard to the local climate. The building standard is becoming the code, the building code, in a number of jurisdictions and there is some discussion of doing that, moving in that direction in British Columbia as well. So it's creeping up on the, on the visibility scale rather rapidly. The graph on the left side of the page illustrates the relative degree of energy savings that are achieved through passive house construction. The column on the left-hand side is a building stock, average level of energy use for a building, so your average existing building today. The column in the middle reflects the amount of total energy used by the average new building today. I think that's about one code cycle, we just had a new building code which brings the amount of energy down a little bit, but it's still approximately in that range. What passive house does is brings it down to that very small column on the right-hand side and it does it primarily by reducing by approximately 90% the heating and cooling load in a building, because that's where most of the energy goes is for heating and cooling, and that's what passive house targets directly through a very high-performance envelope. And then the other aspects of energy use in a building are also optimized, but there's simply not the amount of saving available in those other areas. The image on this slide is a high-rise passive house building, a bank tower actually in Vienna. Interestingly enough, it's built on the former site of the World Headquarters for OPEC. Now, just moving to a few images of local projects, we've got one in the upper left-hand corner in Whistler and a income-restricted neighborhood in Whistler. Lower right-hand corner is actually our residence and was the first certified passive house on Vancouver Island. This is a six-plex condominium building that we built in Victoria, just an interior shot and then the front steps. You can see that they just look like buildings. This was in North Park in Victoria. A couple of duplexes that were currently, we're actually starting construction tomorrow on the one and the other one is just partway through rezoning process, so those will go into VicWest. And this is a photograph or some photographs of the first certified passive house in the country. It was built by the Austrians for the 2010 Olympics in Whistler, it's now a community recreation facility. A home in Whistler, if you want to see a little higher, higher-end residence, so typical sort of Whistler higher-end residence, interior shots, they can come in any price range. And there perhaps is the other extreme, it's staff housing for the Vancouver Coastal Health Authority, built by Britco and transported by barge into Bella Bella. From RFP to occupancy took about nine months for that project in Bella Bella. So Britco is in this business at this point. This image is another one of the rental 100 buildings being designed in Vancouver. And the economics of passive house are perhaps counterintuitive but fairly straightforward. The idea is that the owner developer invests in the design and the building components, particularly things like windows and doors, and because those are very high-quality, there is more insulation, but that's a relatively cheap commodity. You can also save in some construction costs because the energy efficiency targets require you to create a very efficient building form, so you end up with these compact buildings that are inherently more economic to build. But overall, it's reasonable to anticipate there is an incremental investment in design and construction. Local experience is showing perhaps a 3% to 4% bump on the limited data we have currently. If you take in the land cost as well, that goes down to 2% or 3%. It's not dramatic and if the incremental cost is added to a mortgage, the people who are buying these units tend to be better off in the first month because the maintenance cost, the operating cost go down by more than the mortgage goes up. That's something we've been able to achieve locally and the experience is, as the market develops and there's more components, more competition in the market for components and so on, that cost increment tends to go down. So the buildings will, by any reasonable analysis, provide a more economic option for building owners, even if they're slightly more expensive to build. What it really amounts to is a reallocation of resources from operating costs into design and construction, but with the capital cost of most building lifecycle costs being a very small portion, you hear numbers perhaps in the 20% range or so were capital costs, if we increase that 20% a little bit and generate substantial savings on the 80% that are comprised of operating costs, the economics are really very simple to work out. Now, from a consumer's perspective, things look a little bit different. I've been speaking so far from the policy perspective or the regulatory perspective and the environmental impact of highly efficient buildings, but the consumers will often look at it from a different perspective. And our experience in dealing with many consumers over the years is that of course affordability is a factor and when the economics are explained to them, it does make sense to most buyers. The other really big thing that people notice is the comfort, because when a home is built to this standard, there are no cold spots. The inside surface of the windows is warm enough, there can be no cold drafts. There's no interior surface that is cool enough to allow condensation. So the comfort is really quite remarkable and is the thing that brings people back to these buildings time and again. The other thing is indoor air quality. With the high-performance ventilation system that is required in a building like this, there is a constant silent supply of fresh air circulating through the building at all times. So when you walk into the building, the fact that you've got that fresh air there is palpable. You can feel it, you can smell it, it's there all the time. Many homes will have all of the air and then it's changed about every three hours, and it's all done silently. The buildings tend to be very quiet because of the quality envelope, the exterior noises, traffic noises, that sort of thing are kept out, and there's not a lot of noisy equipment in these buildings to make the interior noisy. So you've got these simple systems of high quality and they'll generate long-term value as a result, because there aren't the sort of complex mechanical systems that tend to go down in value. And that's what we find consumers tend to look at when they're assessing these buildings. Energy efficiency is a factor for sure, but those items tend to rank a little higher on the list. And this is the final slide this evening, and just a few words on the policy context. All of this is of course originates or perhaps ends up at the global level. Paris just happened, we had 195 countries signing up. We've got an image there of some global leaders at Paris just last fall. And so we've got all of that, that's fairly high-profile. The federal government is now starting to become engaged. That picture on the right, top right, is Catherine McKenna, the Federal Minister of the Environment at a passive house social housing project in Audubon. And she's coming to Vancouver again next week, we'll be meeting with her there. So it's, it's part of a larger group, but still, there's movement at the federal level. At the provincial level, there's some images across the bottom with some provincial ministers at a local passive house project. The provincial government is supporting education and training for the industry in this area and they're involved in a number of other initiatives, including building code initiatives. So there's quite a lot that's on the agenda provincially and locally, there's an image there of Mary Lisa Helps in a building, but local government is really leading the way in many, many respects with municipalities adopting policies and bylaws and initiatives or even just informally doing what they can to support high-performance buildings. There's really a whole array of these sorts of initiatives coming forward. So that's all I really wanted to say, is to just a quick few words on what is happening and to say that we, as the Passive House Institute, would be more than happy to assist or work with the city of Callwood if there was any desire to work on policies or find out what other municipalities are doing, that sort of thing. So we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? councillor Martin?
You mentioned that you've got a 2% to 4% bump on construction costs. Do you know, have you done any research around the energy savings and when that payback happens?
Yes, and I could, I could give you a nice 72-page study if you wish.
No.
The, yes, we have, and if you look just at the payback from energy savings with our low-energy prices, it can be fairly lengthy, but these are simple buildings too, so they have a lot less maintenance. It's not just the energy costs. Typically, there's no furnace to service or maintain, for example, and the components are not numerous, but they're high-quality. So if you add the reduced maintenance cost to the energy bills, the payback, the payback is normally instantaneous, in the sense that if you add the incremental cost to a mortgage, you're going to be dollars ahead in the first month.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, I guess, may I, through the chair? I guess what I'm just trying to understand is that you're basically saying, I've got to, say it, just for easy math, a 3% construction cost increase, so when do I recover, what year do I recover back that 3% so that I'm even?
The study that I referred to, and I can't quote the timeframes exactly, but it was, what they were seeing there on a fairly limited sample size was, I want to say, five, seven years, depending on the assumptions. But I would also say that this cost game is tricky because some projects will be cost less and some will cost much more.
Right.
You know, costs are all over the map in any kind of construction standard.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Dogan?
Thank you, worship. Just a quick question. Does passive house have an impact on the design of the structure, I ask, because I noticed that the majority of the pitches here are flat-roofed or very, very gentle sloped-roofed.
Well, the roof can very easily be any pitch, but it will impact the design in that you want a compact form, so you don't want a complex envelope that tends to go in and out and spread out, you want to bring the building together. So it certainly has that impact for small buildings like houses. For larger buildings, it doesn't matter, commercial, multifamily, the larger buildings are inherently efficient, but a single-family home has a very large envelope area for the enclosed space, so it becomes important to be compact. But there's many different styles, there's, you can see in Europe where they're doing retrofits of very, very old buildings, you'd never notice until you go up and look closely at the windows, for example.
That's what I was going to ask you actually, about the retrofit option, whether it was fiscally feasible to retrofit a building.
It is, and there's a lot of teaching and learning around retrofits within the standard. There's some different rules that apply to retrofits because it often isn't realistic to, normally it isn't realistic to bring to, normally it isn't realistic to bring them up to the efficiency of a new building. But there's, yeah, there's a lot of information there. Whether it's worthwhile depends on the building. It needs to be a building, I would suggest, that has some inherent value, whether it be heritage value, whether it be a good and useful design. If it's a less expensive building that perhaps could be better replaced with more density now, which is perhaps not a good investment. So it's very much a case-by-case analysis.
That's cool. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a question. You mentioned in the slides there of this becoming code minimum, you know, objectives. Is there any places that have already undertaken to make that a little bit more structured?
Not in Canada. There is in Europe, though, and Brussels is perhaps the best example, but because they did it so quickly and so effectively. But there is active groups established by the provincial government now looking at a stretch code for BC. And within that context, the municipal, local government's representatives on that committee have indicated that they wish the endpoint that they wished the code to provide in terms of energy efficiency is Passive House. So that recommendation is going forward from the Energy Efficiency Working Group to the provincial government, that the stretch code provide for it in BC.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation. Moving on then to the second presentation, 4.3.2, Cale Lewis, Principal Discovery Research and our citizen satisfaction survey.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you to Sandra and the council, the City of Callwood, for giving Discovery Research the opportunity to complete this citizen survey. Okay, jumping ahead a little bit. Just to give you a little background about myself and about Discovery Research, I've been a research analyst for about 20, 21 years, and Discovery Research came into existence in 2001. So we've done many citizen surveys across British Columbia and very happy to be involved in Callwood's baseline measurement. Very important step in the research process and getting feedback from your customers or from your citizens is the very first measurement. So from this point on, future research will be used and to go against the baseline measurement. And so this is a very important survey to be part of. There we go. So as I go through this, don't hesitate to ask any questions that you might have. You can jump in or you can just save them to the end, and I'll try and answer any questions that you have. And if you come up with questions that I can't answer, then we'll be able to go back to the data and perhaps answer them after looking at the data again. So this was a randomized telephone survey, such that any member of the public or any member of the Callwood, any Callwood citizen was possible to be included in the sample. We used landline telephone and also cellphone numbers. In the end, we ended up with 400 completed surveys.
Cale, I think we've got a question over here.
Sure. Question?
Yes, on the telephone part, I was wondering the breakdown between cellphones and landlines.
We ended up just calling, we called about 100 of the sample was based in cellphones, but at the end, at the end of the day, we ended up with, we will call the numbers and we'll set quotas for different age groups. So the cellphones or the landlines are both sources of us trying to find smaller, the smaller age groups. So the younger age groups are harder to find. So we use the cellphones to try and attain those. And for the larger groups, we will typically end up hitting those quotas earlier. So we, in total, we ended up with several different, different, I'm just a little nervous right now, sorry. We made over 3,000 calls in order to reach the sample of 400. And at the end of the day, we end up with a sample of 400. So it requires several calls. I couldn't give you the exact number of cellphone numbers that we called versus landline numbers.
Okay, because when we started this process, my concern was that if it was landline-based only, you might be missing an entire part of our demographics.
Exactly.
So you took the number of phone calls to try to get the match with Callwood demographics?
Correct. What we'll do is we'll set quotas for the different age groups. So in this particular case, we've got younger age group, medium age group, and the older age group. Once we fill up our quota for the older age group, we'll stop calling that age group. That typically happens first. So when we're going through the survey, we'll say we're calling people in the age, between the age of 18 and 65. And so if they've already, if we've already filled up the quota of over 65, then we won't do a survey with those people. And we limit ourselves to people under there. Eventually, we fill up the middle age quota as well, and then we're just stuck with talking to people in the youngest age group.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we, one of the very first things that we establish with them is that they're 18 years older and they live in the City of Callwood. If our age quotas are full, then we will say in our introduction that you have to be between a certain age level. Statistics from a sample of 400 are accurate within plus or minus 4.9% at the 95% confidence interval, 19 times out of 20. So that essentially means if we were to repeat this survey again and did another random sample of 400 residents, we would end up with a sample of, or we would end up with the same statistics 19 times out of 20, and they would be within plus or minus 4.9%. In addition to the telephone survey, we also allowed citizens to complete an online survey. There were, in total, there were 75 people who took it upon themselves to log into the city's website and complete the citizen survey. Results can be seen in the appendix of the report of the online surveys. We don't include those online surveys in the actual 400 sample because they're self-selected and typically will have different levels, and it's not a statistically reliable source. So as I alluded to earlier, we set quotas for the two, for the three age groups, 18 to 44, 45 to 64, and 65 plus. The middle column there is the actual percentage of people that we had in our sample of 400. So we had 24% of our sample in the 18 to 44 group. We had 51% of our sample in the 45 to 64 group, and 65, as 25% in the 65 or older group. If we take a look at the actual census information, that breakdown is 46, 38, 17. So we apply weighting to the data, and we end up, so the actual statistics are matched to the population, and those will, are matching the population exactly, 46, 38, 17. Okay, so the very first set of results, the quality of life in Callwood. On a scale from 1 to 10, with 1 equal to 4 and 10 equal to excellent, how would you rate Callwood as a place to raise children? So on a scale from 1 to 10, we ended up with a rating of 7.6 out of 10. Overall quality of life in Callwood, got a rating of 7.5. Callwood as a place to retire, 7.3. And Callwood as a place for young adults to learn, work, play, and live, got a slightly lower rating of 6.6. But all of those are well above the medium level of 5 or 6, and so some strong ratings to start out with. Okay, next, more overall satisfaction with the City of Callwood. In general, I believe the City of Callwood is doing a good job. Got a rating of 6.1 out of 10. The City of Callwood listens to citizens and encourages their involvement in council decision-making, 5.6. And then I receive good value for the municipal taxes I pay. Got a rating of 5.4. Next, compared to five years ago, how do you feel the quality of life for Callwood residents has changed? So first of all, the majority of people said there's no change, and there was a slightly higher percentage that said better. 23% said that the quality of life has changed to the better since five years ago, and then 18% said worse, 4% were not sure. We listed out the verbatim responses that people gave as reasons to why it got better or why it got worse, and that's the last appendix in the report. For the most part, a lot of responses for reasons it got better were that there were more amenities, more services offered, more shopping available, and there was a wide variety of reasons that were given for worse. One of the main ones that I can recall was traffic. In your opinion, what is the single most important issue facing the City of Callwood? There's three main ones that came up, and this was, this was an open-ended question, so we don't provide them with any answers. We just code the answers that they provide. The first one had to do with development and urban planning. That was the most important issue facing the city. Next, 22% indicated transportation and traffic flow issues. And the third issue that came up was the sewer system. And then there were several other ones that weren't mentioned quite as much, but those were the top three. Next, what is your favorite thing about living in Callwood? The first item that came up was proximity to the ocean, or things related to the ocean. A lot of these are related to the, like, the quiet, peaceful nature and the proximity to the ocean and having to do with the location and the lifestyle, the beautiful scenic nature of everything, access to outdoor recreation, and also came up, 10% said the size of the community. So they're all kind of related to the overall atmosphere and location of Callwood. Next, the satisfaction of services. How satisfied are you with the following recreation and leisure services? So city parks got a rating of 7.2, city trails, 7.1, city beautification, boulevards and gardens, 6.4, city playgrounds, 5.7. And our lowest rated item on the survey was public washrooms, got a rating of 3.6. Not sure if you guys have a shortage of public washrooms or if they need to be cleaned, but it's just probably just a shortage. Okay, and next, how satisfied are you with the following community safety services? So fire services got a high rating, and policing services, that's pretty normal with these surveys. The firemen are usually rated higher than the police services because they're not giving them tickets. But, so, but they both got high ratings. Bylaw enforcement also got a rating, a lower rating. These ratings are related to people's, you know, getting a ticket can decrease your satisfaction with the service. How satisfied are you with the following roads and transportation services? Snow and ice removal from roads got a high rating at 7.4. Road maintenance and repair, 6.7. Street lighting, 6.4. City sidewalks, 5.6. Bicycle paths and safe routes to school both got ratings of 5.3, so a little bit lower. But yeah, by far the strongest rated item there was the snow and ice removal on roads.
We have a question on this slide, I think?
Thanks. And I'm not, I realize you're the survey taker and not the interpreter of this data, but can you, can you help me? You know, obviously, you always try and get to 10 as best you can. And so I'm having a hard time interpreting what five, for example, what a five really means. Like, is five common in most communities that that's average? Or is five actually a sort of a bad number? Or I'm trying to sort of understand the scale and how we interpret it.
One of the things that you can do, sometimes an average rating is exactly what you said. It's hard to interpret. In the appendix of the report, we actually break it down into percentages. So one thing that we could do is provide, we could group the percentages, just to give you a little bit better idea. For instance, the ratings from 7 through 10 or 6 through 10 could be considered positive ratings, usually 7 through 10, and then 5 and 6 are kind of in the middle. That's another alternative that we can provide to facilitate the understanding of it a little bit. 5.3 is very mediocre, to tell you the truth. I mean, it's right in the middle of the scale, and if that's the average, then, you know, you've got a good percentage of people that are rating below 5, and there'd be some people above it as well, obviously. When you see the report, you'll be able to check the percentages as well, so. How satisfied are you with the following city services? Yard waste drop-off service, got 7.1. Residential spring cleanup service, 6.8. Economic development and citizen engagement, both got 5.2 ratings. And land use planning was actually below the midpoint of 5, got a rating of 4.7. Good question?
Yes, thank you, Worship. Just, again, looking at the interpretation of this. So with land use planning as an example, 4.7, a relatively low rating, might not necessarily be indicative of the type of land use planning that's occurring versus the impression that land use planning is failing because of a couple of projects that perhaps are stalled.
Sure, absolutely. I would agree with that. And the comments that come through, I think that, there was a lot of comments that indicated they were a little bit frustrated with, exactly like you said, projects that are stalled. And so they will maybe put that on to land use planning when that might not be completely part of it, that's their interpretation of that rating.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
How satisfied are you with the following community amenities? So once again, we've got some items here. Community, cultural and recreational events, 6.5. Design of streets, public spaces and boulevards, 6.2. Health and social services, 6. Availability of shops, services and employment, 6. Quality of new development, 5.7. Diverse and affordable housing options, got a rating of 5. How would you rate the level of service provided by the City of Callwood employee during your most recent contact? So 108 of our 400 respondents actually had some sort of contact with the City of Callwood employee in the last year. And of those 108 people, we asked them to rate the service that they received from the employee, and you can see these ratings are very high. So the service that they received was very excellent. Friendliness, treated you fairly, level of knowledge and competency, response time, and the quickness of service, all ratings over 8. Average of over 8. No surprise. How important are the following issues for the city? Transportation and traffic flow was given, this is on a scale from 1 equal to not important and 10 equal to very important. Transportation and traffic flow received the highest importance of the items that were measured here. Protecting the natural environment, got a rating of 8.6. Economic development, 7.9. Citizens engagement, 7.9. New development in land use planning, 7.8. Investment in city infrastructure, beautification and public realm, 7.7. So all of those are relatively important. Next, the sewage treatment facility. How informed do you feel you are about the regional sewage treatment planning? 51% said that they were somewhat informed, 15% felt they were very informed, and 33% said not at all informed. So the majority of people, roughly 66%, have indicated there's some level of being informed on that sewage treatment planning. Next, we asked...
Cale, just to step back there. On that one, that's 33% saying not at all informed, did they give any reasoning around that or how they thought that they should be informed?
No, this is just a question... No, this is just a question. We're asking them where we provide them with the answer choices. So they had to choose one of these three, very informed, not at all informed. So they're essentially saying to us, this is kind of the first they're hearing of it. Like, or maybe not, they might not have heard about the treatment planning process. They might hear something about there being a sewage treatment plan in the works, but they don't know anything about the planning, I think is what they're probably saying there. We didn't ask them any further explanation of their level of informed, just they were given those three choices.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, please indicate whether you feel it would be beneficial to Callwood if a sewage treatment facility was located in our community. Twenty-two percent said it would be very beneficial. Forty-one percent said somewhat beneficial. Fifteen percent say not sure. And only twenty-two percent said not at all beneficial. One thing that I realized that I should have done, and I will do and provide that to Sandra, is take the first graph and cross-tab it with this one. So of the people that are informed or somewhat informed, how do they feel about the beneficial? So that will be an interesting thing to see, because you could naturally extend that. If everybody gets informed, then you'll probably be able to get a better idea of where this graph will come in. You'll get rid of the fifteen percent not sure's, and they will be distributed into the other three. And I'll provide that. And if there's anything else that you guys can think of that you want to reexamine or cross-tab, as we say, I'm open to doing that. It's not a problem. Communications. What are your preferred methods for learning about local government issues in the city of Callwood? This is pretty standard across all communities that we do. The local newspaper is the biggest source, although in this case, the website, that's a high rating compared to. So I mean, I guess that's just natural as the internet becomes more prevalent with everybody, that number will most likely grow. But yeah, the second most preferred method of getting information on the city of Callwood is the website, callwood.ca. And then seventeen percent said city newsletters, TV, twelve percent, and so forth down. But yeah, the most popular source is the newspaper. And then just some general demographics, this is the weighted results that we talked about. Forty-six percent of the sample is eighteen to forty-four. Thirty-eight percent is forty-five to sixty-four. And seventeen percent is sixty-five years. Do you own or rent or own? Eighty-seven percent owned and thirteen percent rented. And the last one, we actually balanced for male and female in the sample, so we ended up with an equal split between male and female.
Great. Any further questions, Kale? Counselor Day?
Thanks. You mentioned the appendices, and they weren't included with your presentation. Are they coming at a later date?
Yeah, yeah, well, there's a full report. And another thing that's part of the report, and I would imagine that they'll get that...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. Is there's a bunch of tabular results where you'll get to see the results of, for instance, what the different ages answered the questions. So if you suspect there's, you know, a difference between how this age group will answer versus other age groups, you'll be able to see those results as well.
Good. Counselor Nolte and Counselor Martin?
Yes, well, the appendices also show the spread of numbers from one to 10 and how many people were in each.
Yes.
Be interesting to know if some, if we have articles where some people are very dissatisfied and some are very dissatisfied, you know?
Yes, yeah.
But if they're spread right across the spectrum, then it's another thing altogether.
Yes, yeah, that's a good point. And you will be able to see the breakout of all the satisfaction ratings.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Just from a statistical reliability standpoint, when I look at, and I'm sorry, I'm going to be jumping around just on a couple of your slides, but for example, the one where I received good value for the municipal taxes I pay was five point four. But then when we actually look at the services, all the services are rated quite highly, like eights and sevens and sixes. So I'm just wondering, was there any sort of statistical analysis of the inconsistency there? I know, and I know public will be inconsistent, but I'm just trying to reconcile the two numbers.
It's simply, whenever we ask people about taxes, their automatic response is they're paying too much taxes. So we're giving them an opportunity to provide a rating on that topic, and they're going to rate it a little bit lower.
Right.
When they're asked to rate these other services we're not talking about, we're not associating those with taxes. They're just thinking, okay, you know, collection of recycling or whatever, I'll rate that this. But, oh, taxes, we've got to get lower taxes.
Right. And the only other thing is, looking at your pie chart, which was comparing to five years ago, how old do you feel about the quality of life in Callwood? Do we plan, or was there any follow-up regarding people who either said better or worse on why?
Yes.
They thought it was better or worse?
We did, yeah.
Okay.
And actually, I included all of those answers in the appendix of the report.
Okay, so we have that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Nolte?
Just to follow up on the municipal taxes question, was any attempt to make, to break down the fact that the municipal taxes include CRD and health and school, and the actual Callwood part is only about twenty-five percent of all of that?
No, I don't think there was. I mean, one thing that we could do is take that particular question and cross-tab the rest of the results with it, so you can kind of identify what people that are rating it low, their characteristics, people that are medium and high. But as for reconciling it with the, or explaining to them what services are provided from Callwood versus the others, I don't think there was any mention of that.
Is there something there that you can more closely...
No, because if the people don't really understand what portion of their municipal taxes are actually Callwood versus everybody else, then we won't know whether the level of dissatisfaction is with everything from health and social services and schools to the nitty-gritty of Callwood, which is, you know, roads, parks, fire and police. And without the people knowing that only X percent of your taxes are actually paying for that, it's kind of, makes it more difficult to judge the tax question.
We try and make that clear point in the newsletter that goes out at tax time, to identify the others as the first crack at the pot, and then where we fit in it. So I'm sure that Sandra's taking due note, and we'll come up with some creative way to emphasize that again. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much, Kale, for your time.
Thank you.
And we look forward to the full-on report. Moving on to item number five point one, there is a letter that we received from Byron McCorkle, Chair of the B.C. Games Society, looking for host communities for the upcoming winter games, oh, winter and summer games. Twenty-twenty winter and summer and twenty-two winter and summer. What is the will of council? I think the last time we had one of these, we had referred it to, want if you could, West Shore Rec. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I believe that when I was on the West Shore Parks and Rec Board, there was some discussion about our ability to potentially host a summer games. And our position may have changed somewhat with the building of the hotel now being here, et cetera. And I just wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea. They may, I mean, the board members that are there currently may be able to inform us, but the recommendation here that we forward the package to West Shore Parks and Rec to consider, I think, is a good one, unless the members of the board feel that there's some reason to not do that.
Any other members of council? Recommendation coming forward?
So I'll move the recommendation that we forward the package to the Chair of the West Shore Parks and Rec Board and request the directors to consider the opportunity to bid.
Thank you. Secondor?
I'll second it.
Can Lilha and I vote on this, or do we need to excuse ourselves, or what goes on with this one?
I think under these circumstances, it's fine.
Just correspondence, yeah. And I appreciate that with both of you being as board members. Counselor Nolte?
I'll support it, but I really hope West Shore takes note of the comment that the hosting municipality is required to commit resources to the B.C. Games, a minimum of $45,000 in cash and $50,000 in in-kind services. That might have a big bite on their budget for the 2020, 2022.
That's the beauty of having a multiple-owner rec facility we share. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Second letter on our agenda is one from the city of Port Coquitlam. The letter is included in your package in regards to an FCM resolution towards Build Canada grant funding. What is the wish of council? They're asking for municipalities to support the resolution that we have on page two. Counselor Day?
Thanks. I read through the package, and I feel that it's important to do larger projects that affect multiple municipalities, but all the municipalities need to be a partner in whatever is going on. So I personally would not want to see the one particular community able to, you know, gather the whole pot, if you will, of federal or provincial monies for a project. And then that leave the fund depleted, which potentially could happen. So I think that if it's in the interest of municipalities to have a particular project which serves multiple municipalities, for them to get together and make a joint application.
I'm reading it slightly different in that their ask here is for the federal government's Build Canada grant program to be increased from 30% to 50%. And so it would still be project-dependent on that there would be a limit in there, I would expect.
So when I read it earlier, it, usually it's one-third, 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 similar to our sewer initiative. But they're saying that in areas where the infrastructure projects are equally shared between the province and the local government, they now want to stretch that so that 50% of the project cost is paid for by the federal government, and that minimum 40% of the project cost would be provincial funding. So that would leave only 10% of the costs to the municipalities.
So it would help those smaller communities actually get something done, perhaps. Not being able to attain that 30%, I mean, I know of projects that we've had in the past where we've had to try and come up with our third, and we've actually lost grant-funding opportunities because we can't get our third into place.
I was just concerned that, I don't believe the federal or provincial government are likely to find vast new pots of money, and it might find that the fund was then running out of money.
Anyways, some sort of a recommendation from council?
We proceed, Your Worship.
Secondor? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item number six, six point one, Finance and Admin Recommendation Grant and Aid Summary. And we have a recommendation before us. Counselor Trace?
Yes, the special committee of the whole met on Tuesday, January 26th, to discuss the grant applications for 2016. And Ms. DeBose noted that the 2015 grant and aid budget was $27,050, in addition to that amount that was awarded to the Inter-Municipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues as a separate light item, and in the amount of $1,200. She suggested that the committee may wish to increase the budget by 2% for a total of $27,600, and that it might be advisable to hold back 10 to 15 to 2% to allow for any late applications. The committee recommended, and I saw a move, that council approve that the 2016 budget for grants and aid be set at $27,600.
All those in favor? Oh, question?
Yes, I would really like to see that in conjunction with the rest of the budget, which we haven't looked at yet. I don't know how big a chunk 27.6 is out of the budget, but I also don't know how big the increase in transportation is going to be, or police, or fire, or Callwood operating, and so on. So I would really like to see that in balance with all of the other numbers. I know we discussed this at the committee level, and I had anticipated that all of the committee recommendations would go to final budget deliberations.
Unfortunately, we don't have our Director of Finance with us this evening, but if I recall, and maybe RCAO, the discussion around that evening when we were dealing with this, did indicate that this was within the envelope of what has been in the past, that it wasn't adding to, we weren't adding to.
Madam Mayor, I don't actually recall what last year's numbers were. It was very close to this number, if not the same.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I think it actually, Counselor Trace actually brought that up in the preamble there. This is 2% more than last year. So it's based on a 2% increase, and this is not a final decision. That decision is still at the budget. This is simply to form the budget materials, so the envelope amount being set aside as they create the budget. My understanding is, this is, says, recommended that the budget for grants and aids be set at $27,600. So that's what I assume what we were doing. We're making a decision about what we're bringing forward for our final decision when the budget is complete.
Sorry, that's not the way I read the motion.
Are you reading from page one or the final page? Because we're really, we're, the motion before us is the what's on page one of that report? I just want to clarify with Counselor Nolte, first of all. But the motion coming from Counselor Trace was from first page.
Well, just looking at that, we may ask a question to staff. Could I, I actually am sort of with the same sort of question that Counselor Nolte has. I'm not really, I don't really understand why, like, this is one very small part of the budget. And normally, you pass the entire budget. So I'm not sure why we're dealing with this right now. I'm kind of confused on, wouldn't this just get dealt with while we're dealing with budget? Like, why is this being brought forward to us right now?
Madam Mayor, if this motion passes, we would, as staff, would put in the budget $27,600 with the assumption that that was the number that council was directing us to put in the 2016 budget. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, council at the end of the day still has to adopt the budget bylaw. So you're directing staff today to put in the grant and aids budget, $27,600. But at budget deliberation, if you feel the need to cut costs and one of these items comes up, we'll point out that it was a council resolution that directed us to put in the grant. we'll point out that it was a council resolution that directed us to put in the grant and aid budget of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred. But at that point in time, uh, you still have that, I'm going to call it sober second thought or opportunity to revisit that number. Is that helpful?
No, it, it, yeah, it's helpful. I understand what you're saying. Uh, however, uh, through the chair. I guess the issue is that, that I'm just still dealing with is that at Committee of the Whole, we agreed that it was going to be twen- twenty-seven thousand, six hundred. And that, you know, we, we went through the list of all these individuals. And I would just think that normally what you would do is just continue on that same road through the Committee of the Whole as we build out our budget. And then as we come to the end and we have to make an analysis of, is this too high, is this too low? Then we would go back and, and make those decisions. It just seems sort of counterintuitive to me that, that this would be brought to a council table to be put sort of in stone right now, whereas, whereas we're still building out our budget. I guess that's just my confusion on this. I, I mean, I don't think it's, it's not the end of the world either way, but it's, it just doesn't seem like that it would be the normal process.
It, it's, it's effectively a early approval so that you can proceed with spending the funds. That's really what you're doing.
Counselor Day? Counselor Nolte?
And that's exactly why I don't want to support that. I don't want to give anything early approval. I want this to go with an entire budget before committee for proper discussion. This looks to me like we're approving a budget of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, when in fact what you're saying is a line of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred be added to the budget, which will go back to Committee of the Whole for further discussion. The motion, I think, is entirely unnecessary. Committee already agreed that that amount should be in the budget. And then the budget would go to Counselor Committee for final review and then be referred to counsel.
Counselor Logan, and then Day?
Uh, thank you, Worship. This, I, I think this was the same process that we used last year, if members sure as me right. Uh, and, and it's important to note that the motion itself says to recommend to counsel. So counsel's giving the authority, as the C E O had alluded to. Uh, I see it says recommended to counsel, not to, not to, uh, Finance Committee or Committee of the Whole, that we recommend a certain amount for the budget. And I, I, I don't interpret this as, um, as early approval. Um, this budget is not approved until we give fourth reading. And so I think everything is up in the air, regardless of whether a project from Transportation and Public Works or Planning and, and Land Use comes with a recommendation, um, with a set amount. That set amount is very fluid until we give that fourth reading. So, you know, perhaps this is all semantics that we're talking about, really. Um, you know, I, I, I wouldn't waste too much more discussing it, quite frankly, because, you know.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. Uh, I just, uh, I, I kind of, I've heard things that I can certainly agree with around the table in discussion with, um, other municipalities when we were at the Disabilities Committee. We're talking about, uh, what time different municipalities require grant applications and, and when they pay out their grants. And many municipalities don't actually give out their grants till after their budget is fully com- kind of approved. And they don't send out their grants till possibly June in some cases. Um, and I don't think, I can't think of any of these, um, agencies for whom there is any particular rush to get early approval and provide the funding to them. Um, so, um, I would, um, suggest that in order to meet with, um, everyone's l- level of comfort around the table, that we refer this, um, back to Committee of the Whole to come forward with the whole budget. Just my suggestion.
So we have a motion on the floor, um, and it was seconded.
Motion to refer is always in order.
Okay, so we'll overtake that one on a motion to refer. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries on the referral. The other one drops. Uh, item number six point one point two, um, memo from Communications Manager on Waterfront Event two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this memo, I'm basically seeking approval to strike a working group, uh, to start planning for a waterfront event similar to the Eats and Beats event that we did last year in August. Um, as you know, community events and festivals play an important role in enhancing quality of life and establishing a sense of place and attracting a broad range of residents and visitors to our area. And I think that the potential for economic development and investment in our community grows the more we can showcase, um, our community in this, this kind of way. The promotion and, and, um, and event planning all, all, um, serve to promote our community. Um, so last year's event, as you know, was on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. It was kind of a trial to gauge citizen, um, participant, participation and interest in city hosted events, particularly down at the waterfront. So in advance of the ev- the event, uh, city staff went and spoke with people directly adjacent to the venue. And I was quite surprised, but everyone was really excited to see this event come. I thought there might be some more resistance. Um, so we arranged for some food vendors and some musicians to come, as you know, and kind of waited to see who would show up. And, uh, a lot of people showed up. Uh, it was a really successful event. Uh, all the vendors sold out of food. Everyone was excited and we got lots of feedback, um, about, uh, people wanting to see the event come back next year. So, um, the vision for the event this year would be to close a center portion of Ocean Boulevard, um, and expand the event just slightly. Um, a few more food trucks, bring more community partners into the event, um, so that we would have maybe an open air market, some art displays, potentially a paddling expo by some local companies, um, and sort of expand it a little bit and take it a little bit further this year. So last year, the budget for the event was about ten thousand, well, was exactly ten thousand dollars, and it came in slightly under budget. So there will be a budget request for ten thousand dollars again this year. Um, what spurred this was actually when I was putting the newsletter together and trying to put in dates for these kind of events and thinking, obviously, we don't have budget approval yet, and we won't until the budget process takes place. But it would be really beneficial to start planning it now and engaging, um, musicians and other partners. And so that's what I'm hoping to, um, have from you today, is approval to strike a working group and start contacting people to let them know we have a tentative event coming and, and get moving on planning. Thank you.
And providing notice to counsel that there will be a request for ten thousand dollar allocation in budget. So,
Exactly.
Um, a motion to that effect, or? Any further discussion from counsel? Counselor Nolte?
Uh, just one question. It was a fantastically successful event last year. Is there any financial implication to starting the working group?
Uh, no, I don't believe there would be any financial implications to starting a working group. Nope. We would just be contacting people and letting them know that we're planning again for this year.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Six point one point three, um, proposed Callwood Heritage Picnic Event.
Uh, yes, this sort of goes hand in hand with what Sandra was just speaking to. Um, the Heritage Committee, um, met and we discussed putting on a Callwood Family Heritage Picnic Event that will, um, take place at Fort Rod Hill and be a partnership with Fort Rod Hill. And we have tentatively also, um, have West Shore Parks and Recreation people set aside to help provide assistance with games for children. And the Coast Collective Art Gallery have also offered some assistance with the event. Um, this event will be done through, uh, fundraising and the reserve fund for the Heritage Committee. And so it will not be using taxation funding. And the event will include things like carriage rides, entertainment of local Celtic and folk music, um, food trucks, uh, kite making, horseshoes, potato sack races, and, and many other events, um, along with, um, maybe an art contest with, uh, local artists. And, um, it's a great opportunity for numerous community collaborations. And, um, a free family event is always a great way to bring the community together. The Commission would like to have counsel's permission to move forward with the event planning. And the only request, uh, would be for some in-kind services of staff. So the committee recommended to counsel, and I saw move, that counsel supports the initiatives of the Callwood Heritage Commission in holding an event entitled Callwood Family Heritage Picnic in partnership with Fort Rod Hill National Historic Site and the Fisk Guard Lighthouse on Sunday, September eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at Fort Rod Hill.
Discussion? Counselor Martin?
Just one quick question. Is the goal, uh, to be an annual event, or is this a one-time event?
I don't think we really got that far yet. I think it'd be great to give it a trial and see how it goes. It would be great to have an annual event like the Eats and Beats, just to keep the community interacted and get people out there. We'll see how successful it will be.
Anyone else? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, next item is in Planning and Land Use Committee, six point two point one, Report, uh, Regarding Q One, Two Thousand and Sixteen. Evo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, before you, as an update for, um, for Planning Department applications for January and February of this year. Um, to summarize the previous year, uh, the Planning Department received forty-nine applications, um, up from thirty-nine in two thousand and fourteen. Um, of the nineteen development permits received in two thousand and fifteen, uh, thirteen have been issued and one was canceled. Um, of the twenty-one development variance permit applications, um, seventeen have been issued and one was canceled. Um, as requested during the last council meeting, staff have updated the Planning Department Statistics Table, um, to show the number of active applications and closed applications for the current year and for the last five years covering two thousand and eleven to, uh, two thousand and fifteen. Um, overall, the, uh, the Planning Department is continuing work on several large development applications, uh, including Royal Bay, City Center, and Ocean Grove. Uh, the resoning applications for, um, paint from the chosen roads and the Pacific Landing have been completed. Active construction is continuing on several properties on the Toya Road, um, Royal Bay and, uh, Wishart Gardens. Foundation permits have been issued for Phase One of Pacific Landing and for a wel- wellness center at, uh, three twenty-four Goldstream Avenue. Uh, and building permits have been issued for, um, up to sixteen single-family homes around the Royal Bay High School. Uh, several new applications have been received since the start of two thousand and sixteen, uh, and include D P applications for, um, paint from the chosen roads, um, and Redency Place. Uh, since printing of the report, uh, the Planning Department has received three additional development permit applications and a resoning application for six-six-one Kelly Road. Furthermore, on Thursday, uh, this Thursday, February twenty-fifth, from three to seven P M, uh, the public will have the opportunity to attend an open house at City Hall for the proposed retaining wall regulations and dust and blasting bylaws. Thank you.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship, to, uh, you, to the Deputy Director. On the Planning Department Statistics Table, Evo. If I'm reading this correctly, um, between two thousand and eleven and now, there were a hundred and fifty-six applications. And, um, only, uh, seven of them were for O C P amendments. Am I reading that correctly?
Uh, correct.
Okay. I, I bring that up because I found that to be a very interesting statistic. Because when we were talking about, um, O C P changes and the need to redo our O C P, there was an impression, even by folks on, around this table, that, um, there were a significant amount of, uh, applications to amend the O C P. So clearly, that's, that doesn't seem to, to bear out when you're looking at these statistics. So I, I found that th- these were very helpful. Um, so I appreciated that. Uh, thanks, Evo.
Counselor Nolte?
I think on the O C P amendments, if we looked at it a little more closely, we would see of those seven projects, there were some very, very large projects in those amendments. So it does still question the validity of the O C P.
Any other comments? Um, motion to receive?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving on, folks, to six point three, Parks, Recreation and Culture Recommendation Trees on City Property Between Ocean Boulevard, Cul-de-sac, and Access Roads. Counselor Chung?
Thank you, um, through the chair. Uh, this discussion item is originally from the December twenty-second, uh, Parks, Cult, Recreation and Culture Committee. I was referred back to staff to get more detailed report on the condition of the trees. The concern was that the trees were unsightly and also a safety concern. Um, the park's foreman hired Tomahawk to assess the trees. And it was found that a few are, in fact, unhealthy. And that it would be no problem to just add this to the regular maintenance of the Swamout Lagoon. And there is the recommendation. And I would so move that the city clean up and prune trees between Ocean Boulevard and the acts, and that the city, sorry. That the city clean up and prune trees between Ocean Boulevard and the access to the duplexes for the purpose of health, safety, and regular maintenance. This includes, but is not limited to, two large trees at the north end of the grove, one large alder, and one large leaf maple, previously topped cherries, and small maples and trees further south along the road to the duplex.
Seconder, please?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Uh, through the Chair to staff. I almost feel kind of like we're micromanaging again. Is this, is this really a motion that should be coming to counsel? Like, like, isn't this something like, that we're talking about specific trees that wouldn't staff just go do it? I guess, I guess I'm just looking.
I, the, I think the issue is that there are people who would like us to take down a lot of those trees. And, um, this was sort of the compromise after we'd looked at it all. And it needed a resolution from counsel in order to say, this is what we're going to do. We're not going to take down the trees that you wanted taken down.
Counselor Nolte?
Uh, in fact, has this work already been done?
Not as far as I know, but maybe you know better.
I, I did have a resident commenting on the city clearing trees in that area already, so.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe you could, would that be parks?
Yeah, I'll check with, check with that and make sure they didn't go ahead without counsel approval. Okay.
They, I will say that there, there was regular cleanup being done down that way. And this has been, like, in addition to, and so this is why it's back here for resolution. But it hasn't been, not, not this part of it. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend staff for finding, uh, a middle-of-the-road option. Uh, many years ago, when I was chairing Parks and Recreation and Culture, it was certainly a contentious issue. And we certainly have been repeatedly asked to trim trees for, specifically for views, for no, no other reason. So I feel that staff have, have taken a very, um, appropriate response. Uh, you know, we don't want to leave dead or dangerous trees, uh, there. And we don't want to clear the trees out for the views either, because that would start us on a slippery slope. So I think it was a very wise, um, uh, initiative, uh, after the report and, and the, um, looking into the matter. So, uh, I think it was a good resolution, and I just wanted to commend them.
Uh, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, moving on to Transportation and Public Infrastructure, six point four point one, Recommendation Update to Cycling Advisory Committee? Jason? Counselor Nolte?
Yes, the, uh, Cycling Advisory Committee has been for a long time trying to change themselves into an Active Transportation Committee, uh, which their, uh, terms of reference don't exactly, uh, allow. And the terms of reference are actually very unclear as to whom the committee reports to, whether it reports to Transportation and Public Works, or whether it reports to counsel, or planning, or all three. So the idea is to have the, uh, Chair of the Committee get a new set of, uh, terms of reference to, and, uh, terms of reference to, uh, counsel or committee and, uh, clarify that so they know exactly where they're going and provide clarity for Transportation and Public Infrastructure and counsel. So it's recommended to counsel that the Chair of the Cycling Advisory Committee be directed to work with staff to prepare revised terms of reference, membership committee name update, and improve process for referrals and input to committee and counsel, aiming to complete this process no later than May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. I so move.
Discussion from counsel? Oh, Counselor Day?
Just to say that, uh, that the terms of reference will, of course, come back to counsel for approval, written out.
Uh, call the question. All those in favor? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moves us into bylaws. And before we start with number one, seven point one, CIO, in regards to this, it's bylaw number one five nine eight, it, which is associated with the two minutes and, and reports that we've already pulled from the agenda and referred. Do we need to do anything with this one at this time? Because there is question about addressing the idea of a sewer or septic line situated underneath a potential road allowance for future.
Madam Mayor, if, my interpretation of tonight is that council wasn't satisfied with the minutes in the report. And if that was the case, then you should probably defer the, excuse me, reading of the bylaws, well.
So we will take this one off and defer until next council meeting, when everything will come back. Looking then to seven point two, bylaw number one five eight one.
Madam Mayor, you need a motion to defer that?
Pardon me. Motion to defer? Coming. And a second is there? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number one five eight one, Final Reading for Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number five nine eight, two thousand and one.
Move final?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number one five eight two, Final Reading, again, Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number six two five?
Move final?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Seven point four, bylaw number one six oh nine, Final Reading, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number five nine eight? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading for Callwood, for bylaw number one six one zero, Callwood South Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number six oh two?
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Seven point six, folk, this is for first and second readings only. Bylaw number one six one three, Callwood Land Use Bylaw, number nineteen eighty-nine, Amendment number one five two, bylaw number one six one three.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Second, second? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? That concludes our agenda for this evening. We have no in-camera, so there is nothing to release. Looking for adjournment?
Move adjournment?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you very much, folks.